In the severe weather season, it might be interesting to take a look back at the wacky winter that we've had which was capped off by terrific flooding across the area. And joining us now for that recap is Ralph Robb.
Well, a wacky winter, I guess you could call it, Paul. It was a very unusual year. I have to look at it and say, my goodness. And I guess it started early in October on the 16th last year, 1992. We had our first taste of snow. And it seems like it's continued throughout the winter. At this point in time, we've received 51.3 inches of snow in Waterloo. This is the second highest total that we've ever recorded, and records have been kept back into the early and late 1800s. One of the things that was so unusual about this year, it seemed it was unusual, is that it was extremely cloudy. November out of 31, 30 days, we had 23 cloudy days. And that kind of set the tone for the rest of the year. As a matter of fact, from November 1st through March 31st, we had 95 cloudy days. And that seems real unusual because we also had 95 days that produced precipitation. So it seemed like at least 63% of the time, we were getting precipitation under cloudy skies. So that left 37% for partly cloudy and clear skies. So it made for a long winter. It was not really an unusually cold year. 16 below was recorded in February, and that was our coldest reading. So it wasn't a terribly cold winter.
Anything else, Ralph? What is the latest stage in Waterloo on the river, by the way?
Well, the river is just now dropping below flood stage here in Waterloo, which is wonderful for us to see. We reached a peak of 20.53 inches. And that was the second, third highest reading on Cedar River that's ever been recorded here. And it caused extensive flooding over the area.
Once again, there is plenty of room for you at the Waterloo City Council Chambers here in City Hall, so feel free to come out and join us. Also, if you would like to call us, our number is 291-4365 if you have any weather-related questions. How do severe thunderstorms form? How can you protect yourself? What form of severe weather is most deadly in Iowa? How will sweeping changes in the National Weather Service improve forecasts and warnings? The next presentation should answer these questions and more.
It was June 16th, 1992, when a tornado traveled right here through the grounds of the Waterloo Airport and nearby subdivisions. Fortunately, no one was injured and damage was minor. More catastrophic tornadoes have struck Iowa in the past and will no doubt do so in the future. Not to be overlooked are the underrated killers such as flash floods and lightning. Preparation and education are both vital to survival, as these life-threatening weather hazards make an annual visit to Iowa. We truly must be ready, ready for when they strike again. The day usually starts off with sunny skies and high humidity. Most Iowans are out and about enjoying what looks to be a super day. By around noon, clouds start building into the sky, which is the first visible clue that the atmosphere is unstable. As the afternoon wears on, the National Severe Storms Forecast Center in Kansas City, Missouri, monitors this instability for the possible development of severe weather. When conditions are ripe, the center will issue either a severe thunderstorm or tornado watch. Word of the watch is passed along to the Weather Service Office in Waterloo. As this happens, all the local agencies team up to help keep you informed on the latest weather developments.
Merlin and Tim, come on over here. They're issuing a tornado watch. It's for eastern Iowa. We better get this thing out to the public and the media and...
The tornado watch is broadcast on NOAA Weather Radio to the affected counties of northeast Iowa. For those having a specially built-in alarm feature, a toned alert will be activated before the watch is read. Meanwhile, at KWWL, Channel 7, meteorologists Craig Johnson and Jeff Kennedy looked the situation over and are prepared for the worst. The watch box is prepared for an on-air broadcast by way of colorized computer graphics. With severe weather a potential threat to Black Hawk County, Ralph Robb makes a call to the Civil Defense Director Gary Blair.
Yeah, Gary, this is Ralph out of Weather Office. Did you get a hard copy on that tornado watch?
Yeah, Ralph, I just got it in on the teletype now, so go ahead. What do you got?
We got thunderstorm development up around Mason City there. The storms are dropping southeast quite rapidly, and we need some spotters.
They're on standby right now.
Severe weather operations are now in full swing at the civil defense. At the Weather Service Office, a watchful eye is staying close to the radar as some fairly strong storms are about to enter northwest Black Hawk County.
Ralph, I think you better come in here and look at this cell.
What's that thing doing there, Merlin?
Well, right now it's sitting in the southeast Butler County. We do have a warning out for a thunderstorm in that area. This cell is just starting to move into northwest Black Hawk County. I think we better be doing something about this, thinking about getting a warning out for it.
What kind are we going to issue? That thing really looks bad.
Well, yeah, it does, and we got a signature there that possibly of a funnel cloud or tornado is starting to form there.
Gary Blair receives a critical report from one of his spotters that's been monitoring these storms.
Right. Okay, I'll call Weather Service right away. Thank you.
This report is then immediately relayed to the National Weather Service.
National Weather Service may help you. Yeah, Gary, what you got?
Got a spottish report of a tornado on the ground in Finchford.
And the movement of that?
Southeast at 30 miles an hour.
Okay, we're going to be coming out with a warning right away on it. Thank you. Ralph?
What do we got, Merlin?
That was Gary Blair. He's got a tornado on the ground at Finchford, moving to the southeast. I think we better go to the warning right away for the metro area.
A brief coordination call takes place with the National Weather Service and the Cedar Falls Warning Point before the sirens are activated. With all parties agreed, Gary Blair then activates the outdoor sirens. At this point, the indoor warning system is activated. Word of the approaching tornado is passed along by way of a special radio frequency to various local businesses, hospitals, schools, nursing homes, and other buildings occupied by many people. The warning is then typed up on a computer and sent out to the media. At Channel 7, the warning is received on the weather wire. A special graphic is prepared to highlight the warning for a television broadcast on KWWL, Channel 7. It will also be announced on FM radio stations KOEL and KKRQ. The Weather Service transmits the warning by way of NOAA Weather Radio to all the counties in the WXL 94 listening area.
...in northeast Iowa.
Did you know that at any one time, there are as many as 2,000 thunderstorms occurring somewhere throughout the world? But the most severe are right here in the land in which we live. Tornadoes can occur at any time and in any place, with the prime area being east of the Rockies. Tornado activity peaks in the Gulf Coastal States and Ohio Valley in April, and then shifts into the central and southern plains in May. In June and July, tornadoes occur most often in the northern plains, Great Lakes, and the northeast. The worst single tornado in our country's history was the famous Tri-State tornado, which occurred on March 18th, 1925. It stayed on the ground for 219 miles, leaving 695 people dead and 11,000 homeless as it traveled through Missouri, Illinois, and Indiana. The most memorable outbreak of tornadoes occurred on April 3rd and 4th back in 1974. 148 tornadoes traveled through 12 states, leaving 309 dead, injuring over 5,000, and causing $600 million in property damage. Over the last 20 years, Iowa has averaged 38 tornadoes per year. 1990 was a record year with 71 twisters. However, no one was killed and only 17 were injured. In fact, the last tornado fatality was back in April of 1986.
But if you look at actual tornado frequency for 10,000 square miles, you find that Iowa is number four in the nation. And that does show we have a very big concern for our severe weather.
We often hear the term "severe thunderstorm." What separates a severe thunderstorm apart from your average run-of-the-mill thunderstorm? If a thunderstorm contains 3/4-inch hail or larger, winds in excess of 58 miles an hour, or funnel clouds or tornadoes, then it is by definition a severe thunderstorm. A number of ingredients must come together for severe thunderstorms and tornadoes to occur. Moisture flowing north from the Gulf of Mexico acts as the fuel for thunderstorms. Oftentimes, you will hear the term "dew point." This is used to quantify the amount of moisture in the air. A dew point of 55 or greater is a good indicator that enough moisture is present for the development of severe thunderstorms. As a low-pressure system moves into the moist environment, it acts to lift the air, which leads to the initiation of thunderstorms. The most severe storms erupt when a jet stream at high altitudes overrides the moisture in cyclone, acting to lift the air violently, causing the storms to grow to mammoth proportions. It is this scenario that can oftentimes result in the production of some of the strongest tornadoes. As thunderstorms approach, the sky grows dark, and ominous-looking clouds appear on the leading edge. These low, oftentimes churning or rolling-looking clouds are not dangerous in and of themselves. They do, however, rotate on a horizontal axis from time to time. These are not tornadoes, nor do they produce tornadoes. More importantly, as these clouds pass a given area, winds can exceed 50 miles per hour and in some cases be as high as 100 miles per hour or more. The best way to estimate the speed of strong winds is to assess the resulting damage. After the leading low clouds pass, there will be a period of heavy rain, thunder, and lightning. The more severe storms can move at 50 miles per hour, so the duration of rainfall may be quite short. Located in the wake of the rain is the hail-producing part of the storm. You can estimate the size of hail by using these comparisons. Remember, 3/4-inch size hail constitutes a severe thunderstorm. If hail occurs at your location, then you are in the most dangerous part of the storm. The area where a tornado might develop is very nearby and would form from a rain-free lowering of the cloud base. This is a wall cloud, and is usually at the southwest portion of the storm. And you can oftentimes see daylight as you look toward this feature, as it is found at the rear end of the storm. Notice how the rain is occurring in the far right or front portion of the storm, while the wall cloud is silhouetted against sunlight on the left or the rear of the storm. The wall cloud has to be monitored carefully, for if it begins to rotate, then a tornado may drop out of this feature within a matter of minutes. Here's a good example showing the rear location of the tornado within the storm. Note the sunlight and rainbow. These clouds are oftentimes mistaken for tornadoes. They represent an area of severe turbulence to pilots, but to the ground observer are not dangerous. A distant rain shaft can take the appearance of a tornado. Careful examination of this will show that it is not rotating, therefore not a tornado. You may see some fragmented low clouds while it is raining, and they can at times appear to swirl with differing air currents, but these are not dangerous, nor are they tornadoes. It can't be emphasized enough that the factor determining the presence of a funnel cloud or tornado is a vertically rotating wall cloud. This diagram puts it all into perspective. As the thunderstorm moves from left to right, you have the heavy rain, hail, and then the tornado. Would you know what to do if you found yourself in the path of a tornado while driving your car? The car is the absolute worst place you can be during a tornado. It offers no protection whatsoever. Cars are hurled like toothpicks, and the result is most often fatal to the stranded occupants. Ideally, a nearby building or solid structure would be the best place to be, but if there are none around, don't try to outrun the tornado. Get out of your car immediately and find a low spot such as a ditch or ravine. Create the lowest profile possible while covering your head. A bridge can offer more than adequate protection from a tornado. If you are in the vicinity of an overpass, park your car and take shelter. Once again, remember to cover your head. Historical accounts have shown that doing this can save your life. This is dramatic footage shot by a news team from Wichita that became caught right in the path of harm's way.
Watch back to Greg Sketches. You gotta go, buddy. You gotta really go. You got a place, buddy.
Get up under the girders!
Is that where we want to go?
Yes!
Underneath the girders.
He's coming in.
Okay, hold.
Don't worry about it. Hang on.
If you are at home, stay alert to the latest weather developments and be prepared to take action should a warning be issued. It is a good idea to have a weather radio with a specially built-in alarm feature. The best place to go during a tornado is the basement. Try and get under something sturdy such as a stairwell. Protect yourself from flying debris by wrapping yourself in a blanket. If you have an old mattress lying around, use that as well. If your home doesn't have a basement, go to an interior closet or bathroom. Remember, in either case, make sure your head is shielded from potential flying debris. Getting under a table could offer you suitable protection, but with a window nearby, this would be strongly discouraged. Flying glass is a killer. Mobile homes offer absolutely no protection from a tornado. Best advice is to get out and move to your park's designated shelter area. One of the more underrated killers is flash flooding. This has been the deadliest weather feature in Iowa so far in the 1990s. Six people have died in the first two years of the decade. Flash flooding in Iowa most often occurs at night when many are asleep, and the dangers of flooding are obscured by darkness. People that live in flood-prone areas should remain alert during nights when heavy rains are expected. Always know the elevation and flood history of your property or campsite in relation to nearby streams. Plan in advance where you should go if water levels rise. Never drive on a road or bridge covered by flowing floodwaters. It only takes two feet of water to send even large cars floating downstream. In this video, daring rescuers come to the aid of a stranded motorist and his child. Many of us underestimate the lightning bolt, but looking at the history books, it is something we truly should not overlook. In the last 20 years, 32 Iowans have lost their lives from lightning, which is higher than that of tornadoes, and a little more than three times the killer than flash floods. The best course of action to ensure your safety is to get inside a home, a large building, or an automobile. Use the phone only if it's absolutely necessary. A golf course has proven to be deadly when it comes to lightning. If you are golfing and a storm is approaching, go to the nearest shelter. Take off your golf shoes and stay away from motorized golf carts. If you are caught out in the open, stay away from tall, isolated objects such as trees. Try and get to the lowest place possible such as a ravine. Stay away from open water, metal farm equipment, motorcycles, clotheslines, and metal pipes. If you are in a group of people, say, watching a golf tournament or on a camping trip, spread out and stay several yards apart. If you are caught in the open and feel your hair stand on end, lightning may be about to strike. Assume a crouched position, having as little contact as possible with the ground. Do not lie flat. Current radars within the National Weather Service use technology dating back to World War II. These can detect only 5% of all tornadoes. A new and much improved radar system has been developed, which measures not only the precipitation within a storm, but also the wind flow. The next generation weather radar, the WSR 88D, will take us into the 21st century.
And what it does is, it'll measure whether those raindrops or snowflakes are either coming towards the radar or away from the radar. So it's determining motion of rain or snow inside the thunderstorm or the cloud. And by doing that, we can tell a lot of different things. But the most important thing is wind speed and direction. And what we're looking for, obviously, in severe weather, is if we're having a spinning motion associated with the initial formation of a tornado. So in severe weather, that's what we're looking at.
In addition, a new computerized weather observing system will be deployed. This is called ASOS, for Automated Surface Observation System.
This will be installed across the state of Iowa as well as the entire nation within the next few years. Now, it sounds like a fairly simple system, something to measure temperature, rainfall, winds. But actually, for over 150 years, we've had a human weather observer actually going outside, looking at the sky, taking weather readings from instruments. And over the next couple of years, I think we will see further benefits. One of the obvious benefits is that a weather observer does not stand outside 24 hours a day. He might go out once an hour or several times an hour to see what is happening, whereas a computer can take weather observations almost continuously. It's almost impossible to have someone at every single city or every single location. We have very sparse reporting observation locations right now. With ASOS, we'll have more locations, not just here in Iowa and surrounding states as well.
Along with the upgrade in radar and observing technology, meteorologists will have a super workstation called AWIPS that will greatly improve forecasting capabilities.
So what AWIPS will do, and that stands for Advanced Weather Interactive Processing System, what that system will do will tie everything together. It'll tie satellite data, it'll tie radar data, it'll tie surface observation data, and all of our other data that we use. It'll tie it all together so that the meteorologist can make more sense of this tremendous amount of data that is going past him.
This high-tech equipment heads what the National Weather Service is calling "modernization." And modernization is coming to Iowa. There are presently four offices within the state that issue warnings for Iowa's counties. These are located in Des Moines, Waterloo, Sioux City, and Dubuque. As you can see by the color shade, each office is responsible for a portion of Iowa. A few Iowa counties are covered by offices in adjacent states. These are located in Omaha, Sioux Falls, and Moline. This is all going to change, though, and change is definitely in the wind at the state's main forecast office in Des Moines. A move to the new modernized office will be coming up in June.
Anchoring one of these offices, we plan on reducing some of the other offices that will not be getting Doppler weather radars. And I think what we'll see over a prolonged period of time is that where there's a Doppler radar system, those offices will be expanding, increasing the technology, and picking up greater areas as this technology is implemented.
As part of modernization, offices in adjacent states to Iowa will receive the same state-of-the-art equipment and assist Des Moines in the warning responsibilities of Iowa's counties. In and around Iowa, the timetable for installation of these radars will be as follows. Des Moines will be up October of 1993. Sioux Falls goes into operation November of 93. In May of 1994, Omaha will have their Doppler. Minneapolis in July of 94. The Quad Cities, November of 94. And finally, La Crosse goes into service October of 1995. The forecast and warning responsibility will shift to the Doppler radar sites. La Crosse will cover northeast Iowa. Davenport-Moline will oversee the east-central and southeast sections of the state. Sioux Falls will inherit northwest Iowa, while Omaha monitors the southwest sections of the Hawkeye State. As these new modernized offices become fully operational, the smaller offices as we know them will close.
Once everything is in, once it's tested, once we have training of the staff, and once it's commissioned, which will take many years to do all this, at that point, we can begin to shift the function to these new warning-forecast offices. And I think that'll be at least the mid-1990s, the '96 or '97 frame, before we can really begin to see that transfer begin to take place.
The closure of these smaller offices will mean absolutely no loss of service to the communities involved.
One of the most important factors that I have to look at before I can certify a system is that the service that we're providing to one of these communities, Waterloo, Sioux City, or Dubuque, is at least the same after we would reduce an office as it was before. We have to at least have the same amount of service, and once again, I think we'll have better service.
We are heading for the 21st century with a new wave of forecasting capabilities. It's a time for renewal and a time of positive change. But through it all, we are still going to need trained weather spotters. This will never change, as no man-made machinery can ever replace the human observer's view of nature.
Just a reminder, we would more than welcome your phone calls tonight. The number is 291-4365. We're talking weather, specifically severe weather. So phone in any weather-related questions that you have. We have one question here from a caller. What is the legal or official definition of what constitutes a blizzard? John?
Well, thanks, Paul. You know, we get snow. We get many different types of snow. We got a lot of snow here in this area this year. I think Ralph just mentioned the second-snowiest on record.
That's correct, Ken.
52 inches?
51.3.
51.3. One of the things that we find with the combination of wind and snow is that the effect is a lot stronger than if you just have regular gentle snowfalling. So it's fairly rare, but we do occasionally issue blizzard watches and blizzard warnings based on a combination of blowing snow and high winds. Winds generally in 35 to 40 mile an hour range. And we do find that you get whiteouts, you get very dangerous conditions when you get winds combined with the blowing snow. They are fairly rare in this part of the country, though.
Okay, we have a question right here in our audience.
Yes, I was wondering if the flooding in Cedar City had anything to do with the road construction over there?
Ralph, you want to address that?
I don't really, doesn't really appear at this time that it probably did. I think the, one of the things that wasn't here in 1961 that's here now is the levee system through the area, and that could have possibly made the water seem higher than it was. But you have to realize, this was the third highest river reading ever recorded in Waterloo of 20.53 feet. Consequently, there would be extensive flooding under those circumstances.
We have a question here now from John in Cedar Falls, and he asks, "Do you think that the eruption of Mount Pinatubo is causing the cooler weather this spring?" Craig, would you like to take a stab at that one?
That's a tough question, actually. I don't think anyone really has a good handle on that, although last summer, there was an awful lot of speculation due to the measurements of solar radiation reaching the northern hemisphere that our cooler summer may have been caused by the eruption of Mount Pinatubo. As far as the spring goes, there are many factors that influence what our temperatures, our average temperatures would be like. And it could have some effect. On the other hand, there are many naturally occurring things in the atmosphere that we don't always fully understand from year to year that could make one spring warmer or cooler than another. So I think probably at this point, from what I've read in the literature about it, that it's probably kind of hard to pin that down strictly on Mount Pinatubo. There are many other factors that could also be involved.
Just a reminder that we would like your phone calls tonight. 291-4365. I hear it ringing in the back. That's a good sign. Keep the calls coming, and we have a question right here.
Yes, how would the new Doppler system affect the six-to-10-day forecasts?
John?
Well, a lot of people have probably heard of the deployment of an advanced Doppler radar system that the National Weather Service has planned. The first... The first system is planned as early as this fall for the Des Moines area, and that's going to cover a good part of the state once that's operational. Now, Doppler radar, for the most part, like any radar in fact, does look at very short-term forecast parameters, such as when will the rain start, when will the rain end, what will the winds be, but it's fairly short-term. So I'm trying to think of a scenario where you might look out to a six-to-10-day or a longer-range forecast, and I really don't think that a radar system is designed to do long-term forecasting. To do long-term forecasting, what we use, all the meteorologists, is computer modeling, and that is getting more accurate. Matter of fact, the computer models that predict the long-term forecast are as accurate as it was for the short-term just a few years ago. So we're seeing some very good improvements on that, and I think that's what we're going to see for continued further improvements down the road in that long-term forecasting.
We have a question from a caller. What pattern has been set as to what weather we will have into the spring and summer? Ralph?
Well, I guess I'd just have to say we have a normal year. It's really hard to forecast 30, 60, 90 days. It's almost impossible to be right on the money. They're getting better, but we've got a long way to go for long-range forecasting, and that is long-range forecasting that you're looking at. And generally, it's, you see climatologists predicting long-range forecasting, not meteorologists.
Ralph, can I jump in here and make a comment on this one? I agree with what you say. We have one of our lead forecasters in Des Moines, one of his main interests is long-term forecasting, and he's kept some graphs on Mount Pinatubo and the effects on temperature in this area. And he felt very confident last year that we'd have this very cool season, and I just talked to him about a week ago on how he was looking for the coming summer. And we're seeing that the effects of Mount Pinatubo are still there. We still see some effects, but not nearly as strong as we saw last year. So as far as the summer goes, I don't look for a summer like we had last year. But once again, like Ralph said, when you're looking at long-term forecasting like this, it's very inexact, it's almost a guess. But we certainly don't look for something like we had last year over not only Iowa, but a good part of the country, very wet, very cool summer, unusually cool.
One thing that could be added to that, too, is if you look at some of the long-range forecasts that are made over the years, even going back to last summer, there were forecasts made for hot, dry summer when it got to spring, and there were a lot of farmers worried about drought conditions. On the other hand, we had an awful lot of rain in a very cool, cool summer. Also, looking into this winter, there were a number of forecasts coming out talking about how brutally cold it was going to be, and I guess you can argue about what the definition of that word is, but it probably, this winter certainly wasn't reminiscent of some of the winters that occurred back like in the eight, in the late 1970s, when it was much, much colder. So it's very difficult to really pin down the kind of weather you're going to have based on the complexity of our atmosphere and the fact we don't know everything that's going on everywhere in it. So we can have some ideas about what may happen, but how it really plays out can be something quite different from time to time.
Okay, we have a question right here.
Gentlemen, when dealing with severe weather, once a spotter in the field spots or the radar detects severe weather, what is the warning time and what is the procedure used to warn the public?
Ralph?
That, I guess what I'd have to say is if a tornado was sighted, we've, since John has become the area manager for Iowa, we've gone to what they call a quick-warn system, where we will go immediately when we have a report of a tornado to the national warning phone and to the weather radio, and that's where the warning will go out, and then we'll follow that with a hard copy to the public. It's very close to being done simultaneously because there's more than one person doing it. We would like to have all our warnings out to the public in three minutes or less.
I think, Ralph, also, that you mentioned the quick-warn. The National Weather Service, as we all know, when issuing severe thunderstorm or tornado warnings is not perfect. We really do depend on spotters like we have here in the audience tonight and reports of severe weather. I think even with the new Doppler radar system, we'll see some improvement, but it's still not going to be perfect. What we are planning to do, and what we try to do, is the minute we have an idea, a good idea that we have a tornado, we want to get that information out to the community as quick as possible. We want to get that out, like Ralph said, within a number of minutes, if not seconds, and that's what we're working on. We train every year to try to get that warning out as quick as possible. So that's one of the things we always are working on.
And we have to get it to the media so the information gets to the general public. Not everybody is tuned into our local weather radio, nor do they have warning sirens in the country. So we have to get the warnings out to the media, and that's why we strive to get the time span lower and lower and consequently give the public a lead time.
There are things going on in broadcasting, too, right now, and in particular in television, where on television, we normally would have graphics like radar and also graphics that would show where warnings were in effect. And that also had a time lag to it, although in many cases, that's been computerized over the last few years to where, in our case, we could get them out in about 30 seconds to a minute from the time they were issued. There are some new systems out now that many broadcast stations are putting in that even further computerize that process so that it's a straight shot from the warning to the computer, and the graphics are prepared automatically and crawls are prepared automatically. So that really also speeds up that warning time on the air.
Bottom line is, we want the public to have a great deal of lead time. The more time they have to prepare or take cover, the safer they're going to be.
We have had very good questions tonight, not only from our studio audience, but from those of you who have called in. We appreciate it. Keep them coming. The number, 291-4365. We have a question right now in our studio audience.
With the Doppler system, is there always going to be a need for the spotters?
Ralph?
There'll probably be an additional need for spotters. This is a highly technical new system. It's advertised to do a super job, and maybe people that are trained to spot will think well they're going to be done away with. But we're going to need as much information from you as we've always got and more. We're going to want to know, like, the time that you actually saw the funnel cloud, exact times, and correlate that with the images that we received on the Doppler radar. So yes, we definitely need you.
Okay, we have a question here from Waterloo, and it is, "How does Doppler radar get its name?"
I guess I can take that, sure. If, probably the one best way to describe this is that it's named after what's called the Doppler Effect, which you could hear if you were standing along a railroad track and a train went by you. You can hear the pitch of the whistle, if the whistle's blowing, change as it goes by you, and that has to do with the fact that as the train is getting closer to you, the sound waves are kind of squished together so it sounds higher, and as it goes away from you, they get stretched out a little bit, and the sound sounds a bit lower. The Doppler radar uses that effect to measure that shift in those frequencies to measure wind speed, and that's where the term Doppler Effect comes from, the Doppler radar.
Okay, another question from our audience.
Yes, what steps should be taken when the tornado siren sounds?
Ralph?
Well, when the sirens sound, that means a tornado has been sighted by train spotters or detected on radar. The person that hears the siren should take cover immediately. We hope that everyone has a designated safety shelter for them to go to for your families, and we hope that during tornado preparedness week, that you conducted a little drill in your home and had your families go to a safety shelter. By that, I mean the lowest level on the home, preferably in the basement, under a heavy workbench, strong furniture, a good, in a split-level home, she could probably designate the stairwell. If you can't get to the lowest level of the home, for example, my mother's confined to a wheelchair, my instructions to her are go to a center room in the house, it happens to be in her house, it's a bathroom, and to take a blanket in that center portion room and cover herself up, and so she protects herself a little more. What we're trying to do to you as you go into your basement also is to have you cover up, because more people are injured, killed from flying and breathing than anything else.
Next question.
What is the difference between a downburst and a tornado?
John?
Well, here in Iowa, there are many types of wind-produced damage. Usually, when I go out on a storm survey, every one community that was hit by wind damage will say it's a tornado. But especially here in Iowa, it can be caused by many different types of wind. We're all familiar with the tornado, but there are other types of winds as well. There's the straight-line wind, which can cause anything from a cold front passing through, very strong winds. There can be straight-line winds out of a severe thunderstorm. These winds can oftentimes be as strong as a small tornado. They can exceed 100 miles an hour at times. They're more of a horizontal wind, wind blowing out of a thunderstorm. On the other hand, a microburst is a little bit different type of wind. It's usually a little bit smaller. It affects a small area. A lot of times, you've heard of problems with aircraft, as they're trying to land, they hit a downburst, a microburst, and it's a pulse of wind moving out of that thunderstorm. A lot of times, it originates at mid-levels, and that mid-level wind is actually blowing almost straight down to the ground. It's a smaller wind, it affects usually a smaller area. So if you have an airplane trying to land into an area with a microburst or downburst, it's very dangerous. It can push that plane down.
Okay, we have a question.
Gentlemen, we know there are things besides tornadoes in Iowa that affect severe weather, such as hail, lightning, and that. What is your recommendation, if you are a citizen out in the country, should you be afraid of hail, lightning?
Or just tornadoes?
Craig?
Well, I wouldn't want to be outside with lightning, that's for sure. I think, in fact, more people are killed by lightning every year than by tornadoes. So if you're out in the open somewhere, you definitely want to be indoors. You want to get indoors, you want to get into a vehicle, that'd be your next best thing. You certainly wouldn't want to be the tallest object around. You wouldn't want to be on boats, you wouldn't want to be next to fences. It's just not a good idea to be out in the open when there's lightning, as far as hail is concerned. As hail gets larger, you know, you wouldn't want to get hit by that either. So all those things are really very dangerous, and in particular in a severe thunderstorm, when you may have hail larger than 3/4 of an inch in diameter, you wouldn't want to get hit by that, as well as the lightning with it or the tornado. So all those things, I guess depending on the severity, and lightning is always dangerous. Even if you don't have what we would call a severe thunderstorm, which is related to wind speeds of essentially over 58 miles an hour, and also the large hail, even when you don't have a severe thunderstorm, any kind of a thunderstorm or thunder shower, if you want to call it that, the lightning of that is just as dangerous as out of a severe thunderstorm. And again, the high winds as well would be a problem. So I, none of those things would be a lot of fun to deal with. I would rather seek shelter.
Now, I've got a comment on that. Put you on the spot here, Ralph. Do you have a nickel in your pocket? Right now, we warn for three, we warn for 3/4-inch hail. What size would you say that is? About nickel size?
Nickels? I would say it's probably close to an inch in diameter.
So a little bit smaller than a nickel size is what we would warn for. Most thunderstorms are produced dime-sized hail, pea-size hail, we get a lot of reports on that. Of course, you'd get bigger hail. What's the largest hail you've heard?
I have a picture of one that's about the size of a softball, it weighed just under two pounds.
There's some debate internally within the National Weather Service right now, reevaluating the criteria of issuing a warning based on hail. And to be honest with you, I was very much for the current guideline, about 3/4-inch hail. But the more I thought of it, I really began to wonder, what does this affect the community? You know, how does this affect the community? You can't do too much for your crops from hail. Will hail this size damage cars? I'm not sure.
Maybe a little. I don't know. I think, we went through the hailstorm last year during the golf tournament that the National Weather Service held here, the same day that all the tornadoes were spotted at the airport. And the hail was larger than 3/4 of an inch, and it really didn't do appreciable damage to the automobiles. The previous year in 1991, I think the hailstones were much larger, and they did a great deal of damage to cars in the city. But again, you can't protect your property from hail, so the only thing you're protecting is yourself.
Is it not true that nobody has been killed by a hailstone? Or is...
I think, I think, I've read that people have been killed. It's very, very rare. It's not impossible, but usually when we're talking about hail, the damage is to cars. That's usually the biggest problem, is hail damage to cars. So there is some, certainly some benefit of warning, that you can bring a car inside or a glass picnic table, whatever you would have that you could move. But once again, the question going on right now is, is 3/4-inch hail, will that do damage, or should we go up to a bigger threshold, more like maybe inch or two hail?
And then, of course, there's the debate of the correlation between hail size and tornadoes, and I suppose that plays a role in the criteria, too, as well.
That's a real common question. Probably we have it here somewhere, but there is a high correlation. A lot of times, they're asked, "How do you know if a tornado's coming?" We don't always have warnings out for tornadoes, as we all know. One of the things I always tell my family is, the bigger the hail, the better chance you're getting to a situation you could have a tornado. Most tornadoes will have hail, and large hail, too. So a good rule of thumb is, if there's some type of watch or even a severe thunderstorm warning, you get very large hail, and especially if you're hearing some type of noise, like a roaring sound, get down in your basement, whether there's a warning out or not.
I know someone is going to ask this, and that is, "What is the largest hailstone on record?" And I think it was Coffeyville, Kansas. I don't remember the size.
I think so, and I think, if I remember right, the weight was like just under two pounds. I've heard everything from like 2.2 pounds to 1. something, but I have a picture of one about that size. It's about like this. It makes that quarter look like nothing.
And that would sting you.
Yeah, and that would actually be a conglomeration, a lot of hailstones that stuck together. And along that line, the bigger that hail is, the stronger the updrafts, because that has to float around up there. So you think about the large hail, you're looking at strong updrafts and a much stronger storm.
We have a question.
Yes, how is TOTO doing, and has it been directly hit by a tornado yet?
John?
Well, probably a lot of listeners or viewers aren't familiar with what TOTO is. TOTO is a piece of equipment that the National Severe Storms Laboratory used a number of years back, that had wind-measuring equipment and pressure and a few other things. Looked like a big drum. And what they would try to do is they try to set this down in front of a tornado. Now, I've spent some time in Kansas, and chasers out there, it's a hobby, and any big tornado or big storm, you have a lot of people chasing it. The object was to put this piece of equipment down in front of the tornado so we could measure the wind speeds and see what we had. Problem is, it's not too easy to put this down in front of a tornado. You're not going to certainly stand there when the tornado is coming at you, so you basically have to estimate where the tornado is going to hit, set it down and get out of the way. Very difficult. I think one time, it might have been brushed by a weak tornado. What they use now, at the University of Oklahoma, is a portable Doppler radar, much better way to do this. They will get as close as they safely can to a tornado and aim this portable Doppler radar towards a tornado to measure wind speeds. Works a lot better, and last I heard, they're not using this TOTO at all anymore.
Okay, just a reminder, the phone number is 291-4365, and we've had a number of great questions, and we thank you for that. And we have one here from John in Cedar Falls, and he asks, "During a tornado, should you close the windows?" Ralph?
No. You shouldn't open them, you shouldn't close them, you shouldn't do anything with them. Go to the basement, go to your storm shelter. The tornado will open its own windows. The damage caused by a tornado is the sudden impact that it makes upon the object it's striking, and the wind force causes the damage. Years ago, I know there was a myth, "Oh, yeah, open the windows, it'll equalize the pressure." Well, that's, that's no longer true. It wasn't true back then, but technology helped us discover that. So by all means, seek shelter, leave the windows alone.
There's another, a lot, we always get asked this about opening windows. I'm sure we all get that question. The other question, there's another myth that I hear a lot, is, anybody know which one I'm talking about here?
Could be the corner of the basement.
Corner of the basement. You want to answer that one?
Well, actually, I wouldn't worry about what corner you're in at all. In fact, it's better to be towards the center of a building, no matter what floor you're on. Although frankly, in a basement... Although frankly, in a basement too, if you had a good heavy workbench somewhere in a corner, that's probably as good a place as anything, so you can get under something and stay away from falling or flying debris. There have been a lot of studies done on this, and in a lot of cases, they found out it was actually better to be towards the center than it was towards one of the corners. But wherever your best spot is in your basement, or on the lowest floor of the building, you want as many walls between you as the outside as you can, and you want to be able to be covered up. And that's, that's probably the best advice anyone can give, and not worry about such corners to go to.
I'd like to add something to that also. You know, I think it's very important that you, as an individual here, most families today are two working families. That like the husband and wife are working, and the children may be home. And if they know where that storm shelter is in the basement, or in the center part of the house, and you're at work, the children, when they hear the siren, can go to that shelter and stay there until emergency crews rescue them. You can stay at work or wherever you are, and know that your children are in fact in that shelter. And it gives you a little peace of mind. It also probably will save your life, because during the tornado down in Wichita Falls, Texas, more people were killed trying to get home to their families than anyone else in that storm. So it's a good idea to have your family know where to go.
And one other thing, Ralph, we're talking about tornado damage. Tornadoes are ranked from F0, it's a scale of intensity, from F0 to F5. Strongest tornadoes are F5. Most of the tornadoes that we receive here are usually F0 and F1, occasionally an F2. F5 tornadoes are very rare. But we found that the rules we've just given, as far as going to your basement, interior room, under a workbench, they will, for the most part, protect you very well from the tornadoes that we usually get here, the F0, F1s, even some F2s. F5 tornadoes, the real big ones, will do enough destruction that you will occasionally see the top part of the house actually fall down into the basement. Now these are, once again, this is just a small percentage of the tornadoes, the real big ones. So if you are beginning to think at this time of some safety plans, you might want to consider not locating it under the main beam that runs in your house, if you can avoid that. Occasionally, on the real big tornadoes, you will see those beams will fall into the basement if the top part of the house is totally destroyed. But once again, nine out of 10 tornadoes, you're going to be very safe anywhere in your basement.
John, just follow on that, that F and that F scale stands for?
Stands for Dr. Fujita, noted researcher in tornadoes from the University of Chicago.
Okay, we have a question here?
Yes, can you have a tornado in any month in Iowa?
Ralph?
Yes, there has been a tornado in every month in Iowa. One time there was a tornado down around Keokuk, and there was a winter storm going on in the Sioux City area. So Iowa is a violent, violent place when it comes to winter weather, spring weather, summer weather. And just wait a little bit, and it'll change.
Craig, I have a question for you here from a caller. I've heard that the pool of warm water in the Pacific affects the weather. Is it the reason for our recent warm weather? Does it come in cycles? And if so, when will the cycle go around again?
That's a good question, when it'll go around again. It does appear to go in cycles, although a lot of things are getting blamed on El Nino, which has to do with this warm water in the Pacific Ocean. This year, and what it usually does is creates a split flow. And it splits up the storm paths, and there's one track that goes to our north across Canada, and other track that goes across the southern United States. When you have these events, you start hearing about Southern California getting a lot of rain, high winds, and storminess. They're very unusual weather for them. And the same thing tracks across the southern part of the country with lots of precipitation. In our winter months here, we wind up sitting here with a storm track to the north, which tends to occupy the Arctic air up there, and then the other track to our south. And we frequently wind up with not as much precipitation and not really bitterly cold winter weather. Although there are variations on this, some years we've had a little more precipitation than others in this type of pattern. I think it's probably important to realize that when you talk about an El Nino, or an area of warm water in the Pacific Ocean, that's one factor in what helps create our weather pattern here, say, over a season. And that pattern itself can be stronger or weaker. Each event could be stronger or weaker, and therefore would have different influences on our weather. So it's hard to really say that if you're going to have an El Nino, you will have exactly this, and then a certain type of weather will follow that exactly. But typically, we have a split flow, and our temperatures aren't quite as cold, and we have those two storm tracks to our north and south.
John, I've got a question for you from Roger in Waterloo. He'd like to know, when will Doppler radar be used in the Waterloo-Cedar Falls area?
Doppler radar will be used October of this year. The other states that we've seen Doppler radar deployed, such as Norman, Oklahoma, St. Louis, Dog City, Kansas, Goodland, parts of the areas, the nation that have received a Doppler radar, we found that the National Weather Service staff basically will strictly go right over to that new radar the minute it's working. So I think we will see some benefit immediately, once it's installed. It'll take some time before we get the bugs out of it. There's some time that we'll need to install the radar. There's training that our staff will have to go to. We're sending every meteorologist at our office down to Radar School in Norman, Oklahoma, for a full month. We'll start that very soon. I think more than anything else, is that we have to get used to it. We talked about that before, the role of spotters. We're going to see things on this radar, we're not exactly sure what we're looking at. And we need someone to tell us what we're looking at. And I think that we'll have that as well. I have some concern that we're going to issue initially more warnings. This radar is very powerful, it's going to see a good part of the state in a lot more detail than we ever saw before. I think initially, until we get used to it, we'll probably issue a few more warnings. But then with time, with training and with experience on the radar, I think we'll improve our warnings, reduce our false alarm, and issue much more accurate warnings. But the true benefit might take a couple of years still.
I had a chance to see that in operation out in Colorado. And a lot of the conversation about the radar is dealing with tornadoes and severe weather. But as John was alluding to, there are some other things that it measures on a smaller scale, even snowfall, that would be much better than what we see today on radar, that there's going to be an awful lot of new information that is going to be, need to be studied, that will help us learn a lot about small-scale storm systems that would affect us in many types of small-scale forecasts over the next several hours, even in situations where maybe you're not dealing with severe weather. So it's going to open up a whole new field in meteorology that I don't know if we fully appreciate what it's going to do for us.
291-4365 is the number to call, and we've had lots of good questions. Keep them coming, here's one right here.
Okay, does an anvil cloud top at any time indicate that a storm system is being blown apart?
Ralph, would you like to touch on that?
Well, the anvil top means that the thunderstorm has reached, there are three stages of thunderstorms, generally speaking. There's the building stage, and then there's the mature stage, and then there's the dissipating stage. The dissipating stage usually has large anvil top, which is generally blown downstream by high winds aloft, or what we call the jet stream, or I like to use a term, a meandering river in the atmosphere that it has strong winds. And that's, when the anvil is there, and it's all seriform and stringy, the thunderstorm is in fact in its dissipating state. You know, thunderstorms are unique, Paul. You know, we have a tendency to believe, boy, that thunderstorm has gone the complete length of the state of Iowa. And that's not true. There's been another one that replaces the thunderstorm. And it almost looks like it's a mother with a child growing up right alongside it. Maybe you gentlemen can enlighten a little more on that.
I think it's very interesting watching thunderstorms. Spotters here probably spend a lot of time watching thunderstorms. You can see a lot of different things. You can see some thunderstorms that begin to build, and like you said, you might have an anvil top, that's all that's left. It's sort of blowing off. Winds are very, very strong aloft, sometimes they'll just sort of break that off. Other times, if you look at the main core of that thunderstorm, and what you're looking at is an updraft of air, air going up. Sometimes it's straight, sometimes it's not. But what's that saying? That's saying, if it's straight, you've got one of two things. Either you have very weak winds aloft, that's just sort of letting it go up. And if that's the case, you probably have a plain old summertime thunderstorm. On the other hand, you might have it sort of pushing down or tilting a little bit. That means you have very strong winds pushing that thunderstorm over. Now, there are other times, it might be straight and you have severe weather. Well, that means that updraft is strong enough to counteract those winds blowing against it. So just by looking at a thunderstorm, you can see a lot of different things out there.
And they're fascinating to watch, and a thunderstorm looks like it's its own entity, or something kind of sitting out there by itself, or maybe a line of them. But it's actually part of a, in most cases, a much larger system. A system that would affect maybe all of Iowa and all the upper Midwest. So that individual thunderstorm is actually reacting to a lot of forces that are around it, not only locally, but over a much wider scale.
We have a question from Rob in Waterloo. He'd like to know, what percentage of tornadoes follow on the end of a storm? John, you want to try that?
Well, you know, most, the typical scenario for severe weather, say a thunderstorm's coming right directly towards you. Normally, what you'd see first is you'd feel the air at your back, actually, with some gentle winds, or maybe moderate winds, blowing into that thunderstorm, sort of feeding that thunderstorm. That's the warm, moist air feeding the thunderstorm. Then you'd have your low clouds coming to you, and you might feel some real cool gusty winds blowing against you. That's the outflow from that thunderstorm. The next thing you might expect would be your heavy rain, then the hail. Now, you've probably heard that, well, it was very calm before that tornado hit. We thought it was all over, and then the tornado struck. Well, that's the part of the storm, or the thunderstorm, that's most likely to contain a tornado. It's the back part of the thunderstorm. So if you're getting that sequence of events, gusty winds, heavy rain, large hail, right after that large hail is actually the most likely spot for a tornado to form. Most tornadoes do form in that area. They can form in other parts of the storm, they can form in the heavy rain. They can actually form at the leading edge, usually the ones on the leading edge are the rather weak tornadoes. But once again, the most likely spot for tornado formation is the back part of that thunderstorm.
We have a question right here from this gentleman.
Yes, gentlemen, some TV stations currently have a Doppler radar. How will this compare with the Doppler the National Weather Service is putting in?
Well, I think what you're looking at are two different Doppler radars. One is, works on a much smaller scale than what a lot of the television stations are using. This Doppler radar, for example, that they're putting near the Sailorville Reservoir down by Des Moines, has a dome that's 30 feet in diameter. It is a high-power piece of equipment that's going to have a surveillance area of approximately 125 miles around it, in circumference. And it is the state-of-the-art piece of equipment. The local Dopplers are probably usable for maybe around 15 miles to 20 miles around the station. They're good for what they're designed for, but I think the initial design was for aircraft.
A lot of the Dopplers at broadcast stations were designed for aircraft, they have a very limited range. And probably one of the things about them too, is that they measure a thing called turbulence. And turbulence itself has a very poor correlation with severe weather on the ground. So there really is no comparison between that type of radar and the one the Weather Service is going to put in. It's just a whole new ballgame. And the Weather Service radar is much more accurate, shows much more detail, has much more power. It's not so, not as limited in its range, and this will make really a major contribution to severe storm forecasting.
Okay, we have a question here from Bob in Waterloo. He wants to know, what percentage of tornadoes occur in the US as compared to the rest of the world? John?
Well, I'm not sure, I have a lot of numbers, usually I can spin out. But I'm not sure if I know an exact number. I do think the United States gets a very large number of tornadoes, a large percentage. As I've been mentioning, a lot of my tornado talks this spring, is actually there are several different tornado tracks across the United States. One of the tracks is one that I think many people think of, is the one that comes from Texas, Oklahoma, Kansas, and then that goes into Iowa as well. That one moves to the southwest or south to north. That's a classic tornado path that we'd get this time of the year, early spring into mid-spring. That's where we get some of the real big tornadoes as well. There's another track that extends more from the west to east, or northwest to southeast, and that extends from, generally originates fairly close to Iowa, and then it moves off into the northern part of Illinois and Indiana. That's the second tornado track. There's a third tornado track that we've seen in the last several decades across the Gulf Coast states. That's sometimes one of these tornadoes embedded in rain, but that's one that moves across the Gulf Coast states. And actually, you could even say there's another track right across central Florida, a lot of tornadoes there. The thing that's sort of interesting, if you look where these, the two main tracks intersect, the one that comes up from Texas, and the other one that moves down to the southeast, sort of intersects right here over Iowa. We're number four in the frequency of tornadoes in the nation. Florida's number one, I believe Oklahoma's number two, Indiana's number three, and Iowa is number four, before Kansas. Once again, a lot of small tornadoes, occasionally some big tornadoes.
We have a question way in the back here.
We hear a lot about what to do in our homes, we also hear what to do in the country if you're in your car. A lot of us spend a lot of time driving in city traffic. If you're in your car and there is an immediate danger, what should you do in city traffic?
Craig, you want to hit that?
Yeah, you wouldn't want to be in your car, let's put it that way. You would want to get out of your vehicle, if at all possible, and get into a building. And then, once you're in the building, you follow all the usual safety rules about where to go. Getting as many walls between you and the outside, and staying away from windows, flying glass and flying debris are major causes of injury and death in tornadoes. So again, you want to be out of your automobile, really no matter where you are.
I think we need to continue to work with the community on preparedness along these lines. Let's say we had a tornado moving towards Waterloo from the southwest, and it'd be forecast to hit this area, say, during the evening commute. I honestly don't feel at this stage that most people would change their plans. I still think people would tend to go home, maybe try to get home before the tornado struck. That could be the worst possible thing to do, is to get stuck in congestion when there's a tornado heading into this area. So we have a long way to go to educating the public on what to do in case we do get in a situation. And I don't remember many tornadoes that have actually, you know, came during that time.
It's probably a matter of time at some point.
Right.
Bob in Waterloo has a question, are trailer courts required to provide a shelter for their residents?
I don't believe there's a law in the state of Iowa right now requiring mobile home parks to have a tornado safety shelter. Many of mobile home parks do, others don't. I guess the best thing to do, if you live in a mobile home park, is make arrangements, like starting right now, with a friend, a relative, a neighbor, when a tornado watch is issued, that you can go to their house, visit, and spend time with their family until the tornado watch is over. By that, I mean a tornado watch, where conditions are right for tornadoes to occur, but nothing has happened. One of the reasons I say that is because if you live in a mobile home, and a tornado warning is issued, and there is no safety shelter in that park that you live in, there's actually no place for you to go, and very little time to do it. So I recommend that you evacuate early and spend the evening with a friend or relative. And that way, you'll probably be a lot safer.
Here's a question?
Yes, I've always heard the term heat-lightning. Is there any such thing as heat-lightning?
No, there's not. I thought, I thought heat-lightning existed. You know, we'd see lightning in the summertime, when I was a young boy, and it'd be off in the distance. That's exactly what it was, a thunderstorm off in the distance.
John, Cedar Falls would like to know, what should people in dorms and large apartment complexes do in case of a tornado? John?
One of the things that I've also noticed doing storm surveys is that the higher you get up in any type of structure, that's where you'll find the most damage. It's very common to see the second and third stories of a building get hit, and extensive damage. By the time you get down to the first story, minimal damage, and then once again, down in the basement, very little. So what you want to do is, you want to get in the lowest level. There's no basement, get down to, you know, knock on someone's door, but get down to the lowest level of that. Don't stay on anything second floor on up. Try to get down, if a basement, if they have it, if not, on the first floor.
Should we remain at our weather-spotted locations?
Ralph?
Well, when spotters go out to look for severe weather and helping their communities, the thing that they should do is stay in their position until they're relieved by civil defense. And when they tell you it's time to come in, then you can come in. But otherwise, you should stay out there and keep your eyes open for- But otherwise, you should stay out there and keep your eyes open for any more severe weather developing.
Okay, we have a question from Bruce in Cedar Falls. He would like to know, what do they mean by the dew point, and what effect does it have on the weather? Craig?
The dew point is, is one very good way of measuring the water vapor in the air. In other words, if you take a particular air mass at a particular temperature and you cool it until its relative humidity is 100%, meaning that the air is saturated with water vapor, then that temperature would be the dew point. Another way of looking at it is, that's when dew would form. That's when, if you were to go outside in the morning, if the grass has cooled to the dew point, you will find dew on the grass. So that's the point at which the water will condense, or the humidity equals 100%. As far as its effect on the weather, the more moisture you have in the air or the higher the dew point, for any given storm system, all things being equal, you would tend to have more precipitation. And especially in terms of severe weather, normally the higher the dew points, the more water in the air, and the more water in the air, the lighter the air is. That's kind of a misnomer. A lot of people think that if you add water to the air, it's going to be heavier, but that's not in fact what happens. The air mass is actually lighter with more water, and that's one of the key ingredients to an unstable atmosphere. So high dew points, while they don't always mean you're going to have thunderstorms, when the conditions are right, they would certainly help fuel those storms.
We have one last question this evening, and it is, how do you become a weather spotter? Ralph, you want to touch on that?
Depending upon the community you're in, you would have to go through your local civil defense offices and, and talk to the civil defense director, who happens to be Mr. Gary Blair in Blackwater County, and he would determine when there would be the next spotter training class for you to enter and be trained as a spotter.
Unfortunately, we are out of time tonight, but I would like to thank our guests for being here this evening, a wonderful studio audience, and all the great phone calls that we got to make this show a success. Hopefully now, we have all become better prepared for this upcoming 1993 severe weather season. I'd like to thank Kirk Eastman of the Cedar Falls Cable Commission, Chuck Angel of the Waterloo Cable Commission, TCI of Northern Iowa, our great camera crew, and hopefully we'll all have a safe 1993.